Apparently, there is a change in the conference schedule here. Conference is going apparently to end a little bit earlier than originally planned. The session 12 was apparently cancelled and two of the papers were shifted to the other two sessions in the morning, so the afternoon session is basically here. Two papers got moved in here, two papers got moved in there, and the 12th session was cancelled. Sorry, there was one paper moved in each of the sessions and two of the papers here are cancelled. But it's also out on the walls, everywhere you can see it. We have the same amount of time for this session here, but we have seven presenters instead of six, so it's 13 minutes per paper here. And you know the story already, three minutes ahead, you get the three-minute sign and one minute ahead. When I'm standing up, it's about to wrap up my presentation. Yep. Then I would like to welcome David Kubanek as the first speaker from Poland, presenting his paper.
Czech Republic.
Oh, sorry, from Czech Republic.
It's cold.
Please go ahead.
Uh-huh, okay, thank you. I will start the correct one according to the program. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, I'm David Kubanek from Borneo University of Technology. And I'd like to present to you our paper called "Evaluation of Fractional Order Approximated Butterworth High Pass and Band Pass Filter Transfer Functions." So the co-authors of this contribution are Jaroslav Poton and Nolbert Harenchar from the same university, Borneo University of Technology, Czech Republic, and Todd Freeborn from University of Alabama, USA. This paper deals with fractional order frequency filters, analog filters, so it's circuit theory. And as you everybody know, the fractional calculus is also used in design of analog filters. And this paper evaluates how frequency characteristics look like when coefficients obtained for low pass are used in high pass and band pass filters. You will see. So now, short introduction. As I've told you, fractional order filters have some advantages compared to the classic integer-order filters. They have some more general and flexible characteristics. You can see here example, magnitude/frequency characteristic of filter, low-pass filter with order 1.2, 1.5, and 1.6, 1.8. The slope of the characteristic is dependent on this order. So you can set this slope in the stop band by changing the order of the filter. Now something about fractional order low-pass transfer functions. I aim at the order between... Order between 1 and 2. And it consists of the integer order 1 and alpha, that is fractional component. So the fractional order low-pass transfer function can look like this or like this. You can see there Laplacian coefficient s and some constant coefficients k. These constants or coefficients are determined based on the desired frequency characteristic, for example, of the filter. You can design these coefficients depending on cut of frequency, pass-band gain, pass-band ripple, various approximations of the filter, Butterworth, Chebyshev, and so on. So these are constants. For example, for low-pass Butterworth frequency characteristic, you can compute this constant according to these relations. It's dependent on alpha. Two of them are constant, it's 1 exactly. So these coefficients are found by mathematical methods, numerical methods, to be the characteristic as close as possible to the first-order Butterworth function. These low-pass coefficients are computed, are known. But how about high pass and band pass transfer functions? They look very similar, I will show you on the next slide. But the coefficients are not yet known. And the designers of fractional order filters often use the same coefficients obtained for low-pass transfer functions. And this paper aims to analyze of this high pass and band pass characteristic, how do they differ from the desired shape. There are two, three cases of high pass transfer functions that are analyzed in my paper. Here is the first case, that is simple multiplication of low-pass filter, low-pass transfer function by s to the power 1 plus alpha. Here are, here is some modification, additional gain correction by these two coefficients to get the same, the same pass-band gain as in low-pass transfer functions. And the last one, transformation from low pass is the classic substitution of s by 1 over s. So these are, in a total, six high pass transfer functions that can be labeled as 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, and so on. And I will show you how they look like in the frequency domain if we draw magnitude versus frequency characteristics. So here we are, the transfer functions 1A, 2A, 3A look like this. You can see they differ from each other. And the specimen or the desired transfer function is here by dotted line. So this is the characteristic that we should be as close as possible. But you can see the black line, for example, has the largest error. So the result here is that the green one, the 3A function, has the lowest error, positive, both positive and negative, from the desired characteristic. The b-variants of the high pass function have even larger error, especially the black and blue one. They differ maybe more than 2 decibel. And the green one, again, the third function, has reasonable error from the first-order Butterworth function. So the conclusion here is that it is reasonable or advisable to use the transformation, I will get back, or substitution, s substituted by 1 over s. So this is the best solution to transfer a low pass to high pass in fractional order and using the same coefficients obtained for low pass. Of course, because this is also known for integer-order filters and this transformation works. But a more complicated situation is at band-pass transfer functions. Here I have two cases. The first one is obtained by simple multiplication of low pass by s, so it appears here in numerator. And second one is multiplication by s to the power alpha, it's here. Again, two variants, A and B, because of two initial variants of low pass. And the coefficients from the low pass are again used here. The interesting feature of band-pass transfer functions here is that they have asymmetric stop-band slopes. You will see it on graphical results. It has attenuations 20 decibel per decade below center frequency and minus 20 alpha dB per decade above center frequency. And this second case is vice versa. So fractional order band-pass filters are able to control, in this case, one of the stop-band slopes of the magnitude/frequency characteristic. And here are the numerical results or graphical results. Again, the variants or cases of band-pass functions, 1A, 1B, 2A, and 2B. And the gray color is the second-order band-pass filter, classic integer-order filter. And the error was evaluated in this band where the slope is the same, in this figure, in the right stop band, in the upper stop band. And you can see that the characteristics differ from each other. Again, similarly to the high pass case. Here, for example, the 1A version has highest, higher peak. Here is the peak lower. And also the peak frequency changes. Here also, the black characteristic is much lower or the difference is relatively high, maybe 3, 5 decibel. And that's why some of the variants of transfer functions for band pass are less suitable for utilization with low-pass coefficients. Okay, the conclusions is only repeating of my speech, so only shortly. I have introduced some possibilities of transformation of fractional order transfer function from low pass to high pass and from low pass to band pass. And the graphical results showed us how these transfer functions change or how these characteristic change with using low-pass filter coefficients. Some future works should investigate finding new coefficients of fractional order filter for low pass and band pass transfer functions. Because as you, as you can see, here are relatively high differences and the designers don't know in advance how it will look like. Okay, thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your presentation, are there any questions? Yes, please.
My question would be if the same transformations can be applied, for example, to Chebyshev-type filters which we give for skipper pass band.
Yes, I think so, this transformation can be done because actually the form of the low pass, for example, Chebyshev... Oh, it's not the same. Chebyshev has 0 in transfer characteristics, as far as I know. But I have here some remark that, yes, Chebyshev was, or the coefficients were determined for Chebyshev approximation already, only for low pass. And I think some case of this transformation would be used also for Chebyshev, inverse Chebyshev, Kuller, other approximation.
Thank you very much. We have to move on to the next speakers, if there are further questions, maybe take them for dinner tonight. Our next speaker is Halit Sinberler from Turkey, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Hal Sinberler from Adios University in Turkey. This is title of our study, Artificial Bee Colony Algorithm-Based System Modeling for Tuning the Fractional Order PID Controllers. This is outline of the presentation. First one, introduction, I will give some information about our study and a 4-pit design problem, algorithms used in this study, experimental results, and conclusion. This study consists of two main parts. The first part is fractional and integer order model structure with time delay for integer order systems. And we used two algorithms, artificial bee colony and differential evaluation algorithm in this part. And second part is fractional order PID controller design based on the used new models obtained with help MATLAB program. For modeling process, we prefer the integrated square error for modeling process. And for second part, controller for controller design, we prefer four different performance indicates, integrated square error, integral time-weighted absolute error, integral absolute error, and integral times square error. Learning of the internal structure that characterized the system by using experimental or mathematic data is called as system modeling. And the main purpose of the system modeling is to reflect the characteristic of the system using lower order process in general. This is basic block diagram for system modeling. uN is reference input and yN is output. En is our error value. And plant, we use two different model structures for this study. And algorithm, we use two different algorithm. And in recent years, the usage of the proportional integral derivative controllers having the notion of the fractional order, fractional calculus, popular we call the S-fractional Order Control, has an increasingly importance in control engineering. Fractional calculus is known nearly 300 years. But the idea of the fractional order PID controller is firstly proposed by Paul Deppne. And this is, this figure is fractional PID controller plane. And this is transfer function of the fractional order controller. Unlike the classical PID controller, we have two additional parameters. One of them is lambda and the other one is mu. When lambda and mu equal 1, this is classical PID controller. And lambda is 1 and mu is 0, this is PI controller. And mu is 1 and lambda is 0, this is PD controller. Artificial bee colony algorithm that imitates the foreign behaviors of the honeybee colony was suggested by Karaboa. Colony, the colony is consists of three different types bees. Scout bees, unlucky and employed bees. Nectar amount is discovered by scout bees. And employed bees bringing the food to hive. And it gives some information about the nectar amount via information dense. And unlucky bees choose the search according to information dense. Differential evaluation algorithm is a population-based historic optimization technique developed by Price and Stone in 1995, which is based on genetic algorithms in terms of operations, mutation, crossover, evaluation, and selection. This is our experimental results. Firstly, this is system modeling. We have two model structures. First one is integer order model structure. And second one is fractional order model structure. We have two additional parameters. Integer order model structure has five parameters. And fractional order has seven parameters. And two integer order systems used in this study for modeling process. This is the result of the system modeling parts. Integrated square error considering the results. We can say, I'm sorry, we can say fractional order model structure has better results according to integer order model structure. Also, both algorithms has similar performance in terms of the integrated square error. And this is for G1 step response, A and B. And C is error reduction curve. Figure 2A is integer order step response. And figure 2B is fractional order model step response. We can say actual and fractional order model structure are almost identical to each other. This is difference of the integer order and fractional order. Also, artificial bee colony is more successful results in terms of error reduction speed according to differential evaluation algorithm. And this is also step response for G2 process and error reduction curve. We can say it's similar, it has similar results to other structure. But artificial bee colony algorithms' error reduction speed is more successful differential evaluation algorithm. This is the second part of the our study, controller design part for A and B for G1 process step response, GMF. And C and D, GMI, integer order model structure. We can say overshoot amount and rising time. And setting time is very lowest in artificial bee colony algorithm according to differential evaluation algorithm. Also, fractional order controller design, fractional order PID controller has better results integer order controller. It's similar results to G1. This is G2 process. And I think the result is similar than, similar to G1 process. Conclusion, the fractional order model structure proposed for high order and oscillator systems have achieved successful results. Also, integer order model structure is satisfactory, but it is not as well as fractional order model structure. The perform, performance of the artificial bee and differential evaluation based models in controller design is not far from each other. Maybe artificial bee is a little better than the other algorithm. And closed block response of the systems having fractional model-based 4-pit controllers are more desirable than the other systems using integer models. Thank you for attending and listening.
Thank you again for presenting, we have time for one question. Nobody in the audience? Well, I got a little curious about you. You compared the ABC algorithm and the DE algorithm in the beginning against the PID.
Yeah.
But when you presented your error results and you quantified your results, you're not comparing against the PID anymore. Do you have any idea of how much different the ABC and the DE would be compared to the PID?
Classified PID or...
Classified PID, you choose.
I think the result is artificial bee and differential evaluation is very closely. Maybe differential evaluation, competition time of the differential evaluation is better than artificial bee colony. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. So our next speaker is from Czech Republic again. Lukas Namorov, please, scene is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the introduction. Good afternoon, everyone. I've already been introduced, so now allow me to introduce results of my research dealing with fully differential multifunctional fractional order filter. Let us start with a bit of theory. There are two basic ways how to propose fractional order filters. The first one is using so-called fractional order elements. But because of the lack of implementation of these elements, they are usually replaced by RC ladder networks. The other approach, which is the one I use, is approximation of the Laplacian operator of fractional order by the function of R order. What we are focusing in case of our research, the fractional order filters, they are usually providing only one function. If they provide more functions than one, it usually requires some modification of that structure or change the value of passive parts and so on. And only work which deals with fractional order filter which provides more functions from the same structure, the only work I've been able to find is this reference specified down below. So we've seen some gap in the research and decided to go this way. Since our proposal is fully differential, I would like to also mention the advantages of fully differential structures in comparison to single-ended structures, which is the greater attenuation of common node signals, greater dynamic range, lower harmonic distortion, and better power supply rejection ratio. On this slide, we have some basic information about the proposal itself. It's one plus alpha fractional order filter, which can provide low pass transfer function, band pass function, high pass function and band stop function. It's based on inverse forward leader feedback third order topology, which used to approximate one plus alpha fractional order filter. We decided to use recently presented approximation, which allows to control the quality factor of resulting fractional order function. And the fully differential structure has been created from its single ended counterpart by mirroring passive elements around the horizontal plane of the filter. So thanks to its specific structure, our filter provides electronic reconnectionless reconfiguration of the resulting transfer function between the functions I've already mentioned. And it also provides electronic control of its order, its pole frequency and the quality factor. Simulation results were carried out using transistor level models based on CMOS T S M C zero point eighteen micrometers technology. On this slide, we have the active elements which were used in the proposal itself. It's balanced output transconductance amplifier, adjustable current amplifier and fully differential current follower. You can see here their schematic symbols and relation describing the behavior of these elements. Now we are finally getting to the proposal itself. This is the proposed structure consisting of two fully differential current followers, four adjustable current amplifiers and three balanced output transconductance amplifiers. And down here you can see the transfer function of this structure. And as I said, the filter provides a reconnectionless reconfiguration of its transfer function depending on the setting of values of parameters of electronically controllable active elements. So depending on the setting of transconductances G M one to G M three and current gains P one to P four, we can obtain the desired function. So in the table you can see how we have to set these parameters to obtain the function. In case of the electronic control of the order of the filter, it's presented here in case of low pass function for three different values of alpha parameter, zero point three, zero point five and zero point seven. And again, from the table down here, you can see how we have to set the parameters of electronically controllable active elements in order to obtain the desired order of the function. For the electronic control of pole frequency, it has been again tested for three different values of pole frequency for fifteen kilohertz, one hundred kilohertz and one hundred and fifty kilohertz. When the order of the filter was set to one point nine and the quality factor was zero point seven zero seven. So in case of the pole frequency control, we have to change the values of transconductances G M one to G M three. The values of current gains remain the same for all frequencies. And finally, the electronic control of the quality factor of the filter is presented in case of the high pass transfer function in this specific case for values of zero point seven zero seven, one point four one and two point one two. When the pole frequency was again one hundred kilohertz and the order of the filter was set to one point five. And table again specifies specific values we need to set to obtain the desired quality factor of resulting fractional order function. Here I have some comparison of our solution with other works. So like I said, as far as I know, there's only one other solution which provides multiple function from the same structure without necessity to modify the structure or change the passive parts because we need some other values. And only our solution provide our three electronic controllabilities. So controllability of the order, controllability of the pole frequency and controllability of the quality factor of the resulting fractional order function. So in the conclusion, I've decided to specify the values we obtained and compare them with the theoretical expectations. So in case of the tested orders, which we expect the theoretical orders one point five, one point, one point three, one point five and one point seven, we obtain values one point thirty five, one point forty six and one point sixty four. For the port frequencies, the theoretical frequencies are fifty kilohertz, one hundred kilohertz and one hundred fifty kilohertz. And simulation yield fifty five point three kilohertz, one hundred and nine four seven kilohertz and one hundred and seventy sixty one point five kilohertz. And for the quality factors, with the theoretical expectations zero point seven zero seven, one point four one and two point one two, we obtained quality factors of zero point sixty six, one point twenty seven and one point eighty six. So I dare to say the obtained results are in good agreement with the theoretical expectation. And we were able to verify the electronic reconnectionless reconfiguration of the filter between the functions I've already mentioned. And also we were able to verify all three electronic controllabilities of the order, of the pole frequency, of the quality factor. So at the end, I've set up some possible future steps. It would be some further analysis of the proposed structure. Then can be implementation of the structure in order to carry out experimental results. And we are getting to the end. That concludes my presentation. I would like to firstly thank to A T C Conference Cost, which provided the funds for the research I've just presented. And I would like to thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Lukas. Are there any questions from the audience? Please, please go ahead.
How did you determine the quality factor in the simulated characteristics?
Yes, so, uh, it was tested in case of the high pass transfer factor, as in here. So I, I am afraid I won't be able to give from the head the exact relation for it. But it's based on the overpicking at the pore frequency and be calculated from the overpicking.
For classic products?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you very much. Any other questions? We have half a minute left. Nope, I would like to ask you, thank you very much for interesting work and also interest in simulations and hardware implementation or indication of hardware implementation. Now, your, your circuit has a lot of functionality. You can choose the, the, the filter, you can choose the Q factor, you can choose the corner frequency in one design. So how does that compare to the other solutions with respect to power consumption and, and necessary chip area? Do you have any indication?
Well, since I would start with the fact the structure is fully differential, so fully differential structures are usually a bit more complex in comparison to single ended structures. So they would take more place on the chip. And, uh, well technically we have, it's not that much more complex because we need probably just double numbered of the outputs. So each output is like two transistors. And I would guess it would be, it would take more place in case that we have six capacitors instead of three capacitors in, if we would use the single ended structure. So, yeah, so in case of the power consumption, um, well, we are using, uh, we are using discrete chips for the implementation. So the power consumption would be quite high. I'm not exactly sure how much it would be in case it would be all one I C chip. But I guess, I don't know, maybe one hundred million pairs.
Yep, thank you very much. That brings us to our next presenter, number four in the row. So we are about halfway. Um, Dorota Mosierska, please go ahead.
My name is Dorota Mosierska. My work is done together with my colleague Mauroj Tazverivas from the same faculty of computer science of Bielsa University Technology. We are working in bigger project about PID controllers fractional but variable order. I am here also because I know about this conference only from the meeting of cost action. So this is not financed by cost, but due to the cost in here. So I'm going to say some more mathematical words rather about systems with fractional variable order and difference operator and special convolution type because with convolution type, I can use Z transform easily and find solution and find some conditions on stability of systems with such an order. First about some basic definition, this is about oblivion function. Uh, for people that maybe know something about disk version of fractional calculus, this oblivion function usually is written here with constant order. So here this new, this is the function order that could change, evolve with some steps. And we can write definition like that, but usually we adopt in calculation with recurrence definition, with step zero, with K equals zero and evolving according to the previous values of K minus one. And about Greenwald-Letnikov backward difference, so G L means Greenwald-Letnikov, some shortcut. I will think this is more or less like classical version, but here we put this order function with dot means that we use a function and we change its, in its values in oblivion function, H its step. In the next slide, I will show the proposal of definition for differential situation when H is tending to zero. And this is a convolution type because here I have a shift, sorry about that, this K H minus I H. So this is a difference of function X. It could be vector function or scalar function, doesn't matter because this is a scalar values of oblivion function. For differences, sometimes for disked systems, H could be just taken as equal one and we use then the same definition. So proposal of differential operator of such Greenwald-Letnikov variable fractional order type, it's just to use the previous one at T, T is the real number and with limit for H tending to zero, is just proposal of that. So about stability, we try to say anything about such type of system. So with this fractional variable order on the left side operator, on the right side, we have here matrix A. So this matrix is N by N and this, this is with the shift K H minus H. So just it's help us to find recurrence, recurrence solution. So we can solve it just step by step. But it doesn't help us, this recurrence solution, to see condition for stability or instability. So first thing, we can easily say when the system is unstable, if eigenvalues of matrix A or let us say too big or just absolute value of lambda, it's greater than some number or those numbers A lambda, B lambda are produced by infinite series, but just coefficient of this series or here multiplied by oblivion factors, they're really fast tending to zero. Here phi lambda, phi lambda, this is argument of eigenvalue lambda. So this is like from this, yes, from taken from this. So to check this, we easily can cut this series to some step because of these values are really fast tending to zero. This condition for instability. For stability, more or less, we can see that, but again, this Z transform of special of oblivion function. So let us think about a complex function like that. And when now eigenvalues of matrix A from our system is from the set, complex set, so region on complex plane, Z multiplied by Z, but this is for modulus Z less than one, then our system is asymptotically stable. So we can draw, for example, some regions about that. And this is going to be presented together with example. But from this example, I use the matrix, simple matrix like that with eigenvalues, two eigenvalues. They're complex and then I will put in drawings, in plots with some crosses inside to draw those regions of stability. So what does mean a region stability? That we should be just inside this region. But I use here, for example, specific order function, this new one function. Order function extending to one with K tending to infinity. But this is variable order function and I choose his, here this coefficient, this coefficient exponential from zero, one, zero, three, zero, six. So the, uh, this, this just constant line, not dot, this is for zero, one. This like this smaller, but a little shifted to the left. It's for A, this coefficient A equals zero, six. So it means that we are faster tending to one. So it's almost like in one, but it is not exactly one. But it's more similar just to unit cycle, just to unit cycle. And now we have asymptotical stability for our system from example because then for H equals zero, one, for example, we have eigenvalues inside all regions like that. And now we would have such a situation that I change order function. This decreasing order function to zero, but with the same coefficients for exponential. And now eigenvalues of matrix A from, from example, it's only inside one region from the region A equals zero, six, but it's outside the regions for A equals zero, one and A equals zero, three. So only for situation A equals zero, six, we would have stability, asymptotical stability for the previous two system is unstable. So it depends how fast this function is tending to zero in this situation. And I also use in our this investigation, checking different order functions. Of course, I can use any order function like any disked function. Of course, I can use any order function, like any disked function or just disked, diskedized function or any values. But it would be interesting just to check, for example, sine, modulus of sine, also with some coefficient A, but here A is 1, 3, 6, not 0, 1 like previously, with step h equals 0, 1. And now we don't have stability for A equals 1. So for the order equals modulus of sine k. But we have a stable system for order functions like sine 3k and sine 6k. About fractional variable equation, it means that I change from matrix A to constant lambda, to constant lambda. We can write also recurrence solution for such an equation. And here in proposition, we put just the limits for lambda from left and right to have this equation asymptotically stable. About conclusions, so we try to investigate stability of the Greenwald-Letnikov type linear fractional variable order disked time systems with some step h. But we use convolution type of operators, because it allows us to use the transform method. And we determine the regions of locations of eigenvalues of matrices associated to the systems in order to prove and just to observe when systems are asymptotically stable. And about some references, there are more some, for us, it's important this paper that we investigate some Z transform for fractional difference operator. And we put some more things about variable fractional order at the paper with Professor Ostalczek. But there exist more definitions of disked fractional order differences. There are, for example, from Czarałczyk and Zielinski from Poland or Valerio and Costa from France. Thank you for attention.
Thank you very much, Dorota, for presenting. Are there any questions?
No. Could you please go back to the instability criterion slide, pretty much in the beginning?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one. I got a little confused about the A lambda and the B lambda coefficients. They appear to be the same to me.
Oh, sorry, it should be sine, should be sine, sorry, sorry. I wrote cos sine, sine, for sure, sorry, sorry. This is my mistake, yes, for sure. Thank you.
Copy paste.
Yes, copy paste about that, sorry.
Any other questions? No. Thank you very much again. Then we move back to David, or we move forward to moving back to David. Kumiak from Czech Republic again. Please go ahead with your second paper.
Thank you once more. Again, fractional order filters, so hopefully it will not be boring. It is a little bit other than of Lukáš, but it's very similar. So the title is multifunctional electronically reconfigurable and tunable fractional order filter. The main author is Jan Bořák from Brno University of Technology and other co-authors are also from the same workplace. Introduction maybe probably skipped. Here is again something about differences between integer order filters, fractional order filters, that the slope can be set in stepless way, fluently can be set. And at the bottom, three design methods that can be used for fractional order design in analog domain can be said. Lukáš told us two methods. I have here three methods. One of the Lukáš methods is divided here into two methods. The first method is utilization of element, passive element with fractional order impedance, usually fractional order capacitor. It means that this element is readily available, it means on the market. But it's not true currently. This fractional order impedance cannot be obtained so simply, only in experimental stage can be said. But we can approximate this element by fractional, by resistive capacitive elements or subcircuits. I will show you, because this method is the one that we choose for this design. And the last method is approximation of the whole fractional order filter transfer function by integer order function of higher order. For example, 1.5 order is approximated by third order. So here is something about the design of the fractional order element. As I told you, this fractional order element is replaced by integer order circuit that is, that consists of resistances and capacitances. And it's more or less equal to the fractional order impedance of capacity character, capacitive character with pseudo-capacitance c alpha and order alpha that is between 0 and 1. This structure is called Foster 1. But we have, or we can use also other structures, Foster 2, that differs from this one by, that these RC blocks are not in parallel, but in series. And we have also other structures very similar to this one that approximate the behavior of fractional order capacitor. As an example, we have chosen the values of alpha of the fractional order of this capacitor, 0.2, 0.5 and 0.8. And we have designed this structure by numerical method such that it has capacitance c alpha, is valid for the frequency f 0 and in some band around this frequency. Okay, so in this way, we prepared the fractional order element. This slide introduces the active elements that we used in the fractional order filter design. It's very similar to the elements that Lukáš introduced already. So again, adjustable current amplifier, AKA, with current gain B, input current, output current and relation between these two currents. Second active element, the element that we used is balanced output transconductance amplifier with transconductance Gm and the relations between input and output, voltages and currents. So here is the final topology of the resulting filter. You can see here this active element that I introduced. And passive, some passive element. Here is classic capacitor. And here are three fractional order capacitors with the orders that I mentioned. Here is a switch, so this filter can have variable order simply by switching these capacitors with different order. Here is an input, the filter works in current mode, so the input is current and here is output, also current. The transconductances of these two OTAs can be controlled electronically. It's controlled usually by auxiliary, auxiliary current. So here these red arrows mean that here can be control signal that controls pole frequency of the filter. And also the quality factor of the filter can be controlled by varying this coefficient Bq. Also, it can be done electronically, but the internal structure of these blocks is out of the scope. But they are available and they are already designed and can be found in literature. Now something about the output. Actually, here we have three outputs of the filter. And these three outputs are multiplied by transfer coefficients B1, B2 and B3. And the sum of these three currents is the resulting output current. It can be seen also in the transfer function of this structure. The coefficients B are here in numerator. And for example, if we choose B1, for example, 1, we obtain this term in numerator. And if these other coefficients B are 0, we obtain low pass filter of fractional order 1 plus alpha. If we write the general transfer function of low pass fractional order filter, we have here again the coefficients that can be determined for desired frequency characteristic, for example, butterwort. We can compute these coefficients. We can choose omega 0 pole frequency, this is the same, this is only angular. And thus, we can have all these coefficients in this general transfer function. And by comparing these coefficients with the second transfer function of this structure, we can compute element parameters. So here are, as an example, the design parameters of for transconductances Gm1 and Gm2. As you can see, these transconductances, they can be used for controlling omega 0. Yes, they are dependent on it. So let's go on. Here I summarize the properties of the designed filter. The filter can be tuned, its frequency, its pole frequency can be tuned by changing the transconductances. Quality factor can be set by the current gain Bq of the current amplifier. And also the responses, low pass, high pass, band pass and band reject can be chosen by switching the current gains B1, B2 and B3 according to the following table, yes, low pass filter, high pass and so on. And here are the values of these coefficients. So this filter was simulated and measured practically. It was constructed on printed circuit board. The elements were implemented by universal current conveyors and digitally adjustable current amplifiers that are available at our workplace as prototype chips. And AKA elements by integrated circuits EL 2082. And these are the resulting measurement and simulation characteristics. In colors are measurement results and black in dashed line are simulations. You can see all the types of the transfer function here. Here is example of varying of the order of the filter, as I told you, by switching of the capacitors. The switch can be also electronic, so as you wish, you can change it, you can switch it. And here are the results, the theoretical order and the orders from simulations and measurements, they are close to each other. Next slide shows setting the pole frequency by the value of transconductances. And you can see that the range is from 5 kilohertz to 150 kilohertz. So relatively large span of pole frequencies. And setting of quality factor is the last graph of measurement and simulation. You can see higher quality factor up to 1.6. So conclusion, the circuit is multifunctional. It offers multiple transfer functions in one circuit. Provides electronic, electronic control of pole frequency, quality factor. And the measurement and simulation results confirm the agreement with theory.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions in the room?
I got one, I got really curious. In Lukáš's presentation, the simulation results towards the high frequencies, towards 20 megahertz, they were kind of rolling down, right? It looked like you were running out of gain in some of the transistors or whatever. They were rolling down. But in your measurements, now using the same circuit, I can, I can understand from your talk, not in that one, but if you go one back or two back, this one, which one?
This one and the following one. You see, the gain is starting to actually, it's actually rising above 20 megahertz. More in the next, in the next slide. How can you explain that?
It's the result of measurement and it usually is caused by real properties of circuit, parasitic capacitances, various inaccuracies in active elements. It's 10 megahertz, I think, here, yes. And it's very hard to construct this filter such that it has no non-idealities, yes? So it's real properties of parasitics.
How did you calibrate your, your, your measurement instrument before you got the measurements?
It's a network analyzer from Agilent. It measures the transfer. And it calibrates such that the unity gain is in the whole band exactly zero visible. But this is really increasing of the gain added aboard, so the instrument is correct. It measures up to, I think, 100 megahertz. So it's not problem in the measurement instrument, but in the circuit itself.
Thank you very much. So normally we move on to Turkey, to Ahmet Tomla. Please go ahead.
Hello everyone. My name is Ahmet Tomla. I'm come from Nazarov Technical University in Turkey. Now I'm talk about my study titled Practical Position Tracking Control of Robotic Manipulator Based on Fractional Order Sliding Mode Controller. As we know that robots, one of the most promising technologies, have been used in many industrial areas such as manipulative assembly, medical operation, drilling corporation and mobile application. However, the main areas of resource in field of robotic manipulator can be summarized, different type manipulator design, trajectory or path planning for robotic system and robot manipulator control for position, acceleration or force control. Among these scientific resources areas, control of a robot manipulator has a crucial place to follow a precise and reliable trajectory within initial and final position of their test. As you believe now, that robotic systems are tampering nonlinear system due to the nonlinear behavior of system dynamics, modeling uncertainties and external disturbance. Using the Lorentian or Newtonian dynamics and of manipulator dynamics can be described as equation 1. And this is the equation here, tau is the control input of manipulator joints and is the mass mass of the manipulator system. h is the coriolis gravity and fractional force of the matrix, and tau sub-indexed disturbance effects on the system, and q is the hour and angular position of the manipulator joints, and this variables, our state variable in control process. If the both sides of equation 1 is multiplied by inverse of the mass matrix, second order state variable equation of system can be obtained as showing equation 2. And this equation will be used in proposed control algorithm. The aim of the all control techniques is to control the robot manipulator joint tensions accurately for given trajectory. In order to meet the accurate trajectory tracking demand, the tracking error function should be minimized as much as possible. In it, different type of control techniques have been applied to the robotic system such as classical PID control for the nonlinear control techniques, H-infinite or sliding mode control techniques have been applied to different types of robotic systems. In addition to these pure control methods, fractional order calculus techniques has been combined with different types of control technologies to obtain robust control performance in resources. This is the classical fractional order PID control block diagram. In this paper, modified by the advent of fractional order calculus and sliding mode control, a fractional order sliding mode control shame is proposed and performed on a real sixth of industrial robotic manipulator. The proposed control technique provides fast infinitive type covariance of system state variable, strong robustness, and simple structure for implementation without using information of upper bound on uncertainty and disturbance in manipulator systems. Now, let us look at the primitives of fractional order calculus. The ring and the fractional derivative and integral of alpha order function with respect to the time are given equation 3 and 4. Equation 3, fractional derivative function, and 4 is the integral order function of f. In addition to this, the end order derivative of fractional derivative operative can be transferred as shown equation 5. And these properties will be used in our control algorithm. Now let us look at the fractional order sliding mode control design. The proposed fractional order sliding mode control techniques consists of two parts. And it can be defined mathematically in following equation 6. First part, quality is the equivalent control law and it can be obtained using sliding survey function as shown in equation 7. And the second one is called switching control law. In sliding survey function, E is the tracking error function and beta is the control gain matrix. In this study, following fractional order sliding survey function is designed by using fractional order calculus as shown in equation 8. To obtain actual control law, first of all, second derivation of sliding survey function is obtained by taking derivative type twice of equation 8 as shown in equation 9. Using the second derivation of tracking error function and the state variable equation of the system, our new second derivation of sliding function can be rewritten as equation 10. In the sliding survey condition, if the sliding survey function, derivation of sliding survey function and second derivation of sliding survey function are equal to 0, then the tracking error reaches to 0. Therefore, the equivalent control law can be obtained as followed. For the second part of the control law, following switch control law is chosen. Thus, the total control law can be obtained as shown in equation. Well, our experience, the proposed control approach has been verified by performing experimental test on a sixth of industrial robotic manipulator with end effector tool using the control block diagram as shown in figure. In this study, for the fractional order calculus, Hong Kong Fraction Order Model Control Toolbox has been used with MATLAB simulation software. Our is the result. To demonstrate and the performance of verified the effects of the fractional order sliding mode with respect to the classical sliding mode control for a given trajectory, a helix trajectory has been defined for the robot manipulator as in shown in figure. Black is our reference trajectory. Red is the hour response of the fractional order sliding mode control. And blue one is the classical sliding mode control. Using the proposed fractional order sliding mode control and sliding classical sliding mode control law, tracking performance of manipulator joints that provide the desired position of end effector and tracking errors for both controls have been shown in figures. These figures, first joint responses. As can see in figure, the classical sliding mode controller are given poor tracking performance as compared to fractional order sliding mode control due to its lack of the fractional action against the uncertainty and disturbance. And this one is second and third response of the joint in robotic manipulator. And this one is the 5 and 6 responses of the our study. As shown in figure, fractional order sliding mode control improved the control performance with quite small tracking error. Moreover, to show the state-state control performance of the proposed controller, the RMCE values of joint tracking error noise have been calculated. As in table, seen in table, RMCE values of joint tracking error norms obtained using proposed control are less than those of obtained using classical sliding mode controller. And finally, in this study, the proposed fractional order sliding mode control method has been presented and validated on a real sixth of robotic manipulator to show its structural brightness and precision. To achieve the infinitive type covariance and better tracking of trajectory, the fractional calculus has been combined with sliding mode control. The available classical sliding control is also performed to the robotic manipulator to show the superiority of proposed controller. The experimental results clearly show that proposed method has performed effectively in perspective of rapid response, fast infinitive type covariance, significant improvements in terms minimizing trajectory tracking error when it compared the response of classic sliding mode controller. According to our position tracking performance of the all joints, state-state error values of classical stemage is greater than about 3 times that of the our fractional order sliding mode controller. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions to offer? I was curious. Did you investigate the stability and the difference between the fractional order design and the normal sliding mode control?
No, no. Only with performance control techniques.
So no stability equations, yeah? So future work?
Yes, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to our last presentation from Mustafa Konal, again from Turkey. Please go ahead.
My name is Mustafa Konal from Turkey. And I'm a research assistant in Namukemal University and also I'm a PhD student in Istanbul University. I'll present you neuron circuit based on negative type second generation current conveyor. The outline of my presentation will be first introduction and negative type second generation current conveyor, neuron circuit, simulation results, and conclusion. Current mode active components provide linearity, wider bandwidth, and low power participation. And current conveyors are a type of current mode active components, find a large application area in circuit designs. Since the introduction of the current conveyors about 1970s, a great number of applications such as analog electronics, filters, amplifiers have been designed. Neurons are basic components of neural networks, have complex structures, and play a crucial role in the brain such as learning and memory. Each neuron make connections with thousands of neighbor neurons via synapses and send receive messages using spikes. Many types of spike such as tonic spike, phasic spike, tonic bursting, fast spike can be used for communication within neurons. To understand how the brain works is hard to search because brain consists of billions of neurons and the neurons can communicate with other neighbor neurons simultaneously. Designing neuron circuit with minimum number of transistors and power distribution is important thus considering the billions of neurons in the neural system. And in this work, a negative type second generation current conveyor based null neuron circuit is presented. It consists of one current conveyor and five most transistors. And two most transistors are used as capacitor in the circuit. And also, the circuit exhibits fast spiking characteristics when a light input post synaptic current. Current conveyor, the circuit symbol of the current conveyor is given in figure 1 and the characteristic equations of current conveyor is given in equation 1. All currents flow into the active element. And the seamless realization of current conveyor is given in figure 2. The improved current conveyor is used instead of the simple structure because due to increasing the linearity and the high output impulse at Z minus terminal. And the expected use of current conveyor is given in table 1. The power supply voltages are chosen as 1.5 volt and biasing voltage is chosen as 0.4 volts. And the schematic of the proposed neuron circuit is given in figure 3. One current conveyor, second generation current conveyor, and five most transistors are used. And the M1 transistor provides connection between the supply voltage and circuit blocks when its gate voltage become higher than the threshold voltage. And the drain and source drain and source terminals of the M2 and M5 transistors are connected to ground. So these capacitors are operated as capacitors. And the current of current conveyors charge the M2 and M5 most capacitors. So these most capacitors activate the M4 and M3 transistors. And the charge start to flow through the transistors when their gate voltages become lower than the threshold voltage. And the most capacitors start to charge again the M2 and M5 most capacitors until their gate voltage become equal to threshold voltage. This is the working principle of the circuit. And expected use for these five most transistors is given in table 2. And the supply voltage is chosen as 1 volt. Current equation of node 1 can be calculated as given in equation 2. The post synaptic input is the sum of this, this, and this currents. And the drain source current of M3 and output current. And this current is equal to drain source current of M1. Also, current equation of node 2 can be calculated as given in equation 3. Substituting the 2 and 3, the input and output characteristic can be calculated as given in equation 4. And the voltage of spike out is equal to voltage on the most capacitor 2. Simulation results. We have light 100 nanoampere current to the post synaptic input of the neuron circuit. And the spike output of neuron circuit is given in figure 5B, 4B. We also analyzed the proposed circuit for different input currents. 100 nanoampere, 15 nanoampere, and 14 nanoampere currents applied to the synaptic input of neuron circuit. And this is output, spike output, for 100 nanoampere. And the second figure is the spike output of neuron circuit for 15 nanoampere input. And this is the spike output of proposed neuron circuit for 14 nanoampere input. And as seen from the figures, the spike output increasing when the post synaptic input current become higher. And also, the spike response time is getting less when applied high input input to post synaptic input to neuron circuit. And conclusion. To sum up my presentation, a current conveyor, second generation negative type current conveyor based null neuron circuit is designed. And the circuit is capable of generating fast spiking behavior. And it consists of only most transistors without any passive elements. Two most transistors are used as capacitor. So this circuit is compatible with real size systems. Here is my references. And thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Mustafa, for presenting. Do we have any questions from the floor? Yep, it seems to be the case. Mustafa, you're not dealing with a lot of current. You have only 50 nanoyems, 100 nanoyems. That's really not a lot to work with.
Yes.
And then you're putting that into those capacitors, the most capacitors.
Yes.
And are you worried about or did you estimate also what the circuit itself would also provide on capacitance, parasitic capacitance on those nodes? And how is the trade-off? How do you imagine the layout to be affecting these nodes?
I didn't try this circuit with passive capacitors. But when we see the output of the circuit, if we apply not nanoampere currents more than this, and this circuit will be will be work good. But I didn't try the other inputs of current.
Did you also see how much capacitance, for example, you will get only by the layout? By all the wires? By all the traces that are attached to those critical nodes?
No, I didn't turn the plastic effects of the circuit.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to remind you again about the updated schedule. So apparently, there's a session canceled tomorrow. Session number 12 got moved. The four papers remaining, two papers got canceled, which are removed into other sessions. You can see on those slides. In other words, I would like to conclude the session, the special session, on fractional order systems and their utilization. And enjoy the dinner tonight. Thank you very much.